Good evening, 6:30 PM, June 11th, 2025. I'll call the Select Board Regular Business Meeting to order. Do you guys want to call it to order?
It being 6:30 and Advisory being present and we having a forum, I recall this meeting to order on behalf of Advisory at this time.
If you are able, could you please stand? The flag will leave us.
The flag is up. So there's the flag. Not even in the states.
Eric. Which is enhanced. One. Undergo.
I agree. House just.
As a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast live on TCTV Cable Station 8 and their YouTube web platform. For those who wish to revisit any part of our proceedings, the recording will also be available on TCTV YouTube channel. If there's anyone recording this meeting or planning to do so, please raise your hand and let me know. If there's any interruption in the TCT live, will you let the chair know and we'll stop the meetings and fix it? Whatever the problem may be. If anyone has cell phones, please silence them now. We have a quorum present. One member missing. We have one member on Zoom. For the members that are on Zoom, you can use the video if you wish. Please have your mic silenced when not speaking. And if you wish to speak, raise your hand either through the camera or use the the little hand thing on the Zoom. First item we have is the meeting minutes of May 28th, 2025.
Move to approve the minutes of 5:28, 2025 as presented.
Second.
Motion made. Seconded. Any discussion, any amendments? Hearing none. How would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five, yes. At 6:33. We have no executive session minutes. Is there anyone for citizen input? You want to go first?
No.
Mr. Toth?
Okay.
Then Mr. Castle and you can give your report.
Continuing my tradition. Case Toth, Gray Road. Got just a couple of things really quick. So I as long as I don't lose my notes. So two main things. I realized later on on the agenda, there's a vacation time transfer. I am speaking as an individual. I am not speaking as a member of the advisory in my comments. So in moving, I understand why people want to move vacation from one fiscal year to the other. There's nothing in either one of those requests that says how the fund, how that vacation time is going to be paid for, seeing how we've already gone through the budget season. I don't know if there's enough money in there or not to cover it if the board approves it. So that's the first thing. And sorry. And then the second thing is I put in a request to have a town email because of the fact that it's the advisory, you know. And again, as an individual, I believe that it's appropriate for every single town employee. And whether you're volunteer or paid, you're technically municipal employee. I think everyone should have a town email address because what happens if I got hit by a bus? Or what happens if I don't have access to my personal email? You know, or any of those things. There's some verbiage and I can't find the document to be able to show it to you tonight that also says that when somebody leaves, you know, or their time with the town ends, that they're supposed to then all of that email and communications and stuff is supposed to be held by the town. And it's really difficult. I would think it'd be really difficult to do that if you had everything in personal account. So though I realize you can't answer anything, I'm just expressing my concerns on both of those accounts. So, thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Bob, you want to go first? No, we All right. So. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Steve Castle, Cable Department Director and TCTV Director. I just want to thank all the responders who responded to the Scout Hall lightning strike on Friday. They're very prompt, did a very professional job. Really appreciate their service. And you know, that goes for everyone. The fire department did a wonderful job. The police stopped traffic around the rotary. And you know, I thought it could went as well as it could for something like that. And I think we were fortunate it didn't spread. So I'll let Bob talk about the building and what his plans are. But I also want to thank all of our well wishers and friends. People were very concerned about our safety and still are asking about it. And everyone is safe. People are also asking about our equipment, which is nice. All our equipment is checked out well. And except for the Comcast modem, and I'll be talking with them tomorrow. And I'll let Bob know if there's a cost for replacing that. I think it's their modem, so. And this week I've just been moving equipment around and playing equipment Tetris and finding places for people to land. So right now Ian and Sarah are working here because they work the meetings. They'll come in mid afternoon and thank you Holly for allowing that. But very, that's great. And Sarah may use that as well. We're also going to send Sarah to the senior center. She's going to do an in-depth video of the senior center. They're going to celebrate their 10th anniversary in July. So this worked out well. And our summer intern Gabby is going to go to the library with Jackie Prime and help her out with newsletters. And she's going to do a video of the library and their expansion plans or their renovation plans. Alex is going to Wichita Business Incubator and Gardner. They're having an open house soon. So we're already working with them who moved some of our acoustic stuff there to set up a little studio. It'll come back once we're back in Scout Hall. And they'll have to get, they'll have to get out of the stuff. And basically we're taking the opportunity with this to send our people out with cameras because Aaron and Ian start the day usually at 12 o'clock. I don't want them in here all day. I don't want to impose on Town Hall. I know you need the room for other things during the day. So I say, take the cameras out and we'll do, you know, all kinds of videos. And this is the right time to do it. So if we're going to get hit by lightning, strangely worked out hopefully. But you know, it's been, it's been a trial just to move equipment around and figure out what goes where and who's going to go where. So I appreciate everyone's concern and I think we're still in business. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board Members. Bob Sosik, Director of Public Services. I know this is a citizen input. I'm going to throw a lot at you all. You probably have time to think about it. Recommend you put it on a next agenda meeting, discussion of Skull Hall. So as of Friday, last Friday, you all know that most of you, Skull Hall got hit by lightning. We had several storms come through mid afternoon. Fire Department was dispatched about 3:58 PM. The lightning hit the cupola and the report at that time was smoldering, light smoke coming from the right front corner of the cupola. So on a Fire Department's arrival, it started having some flames break out. They did a good job putting the flames out, containing it to the cupola. They were there for some time. They were real good. They took some tarps and covered some of the Steve stuff inside. So I was out of town. I got a phone call, so I started responding immediately. And on my way back, I had communication with Steve Castle and Deputy Chief Rick Payne in what size holes and stuff. So I immediately called my contractor, got him started to board up the window and some of the openings in the building. I had one of my highway guys come in with a bucket truck to help secure the building. So after that, it sat for the weekend. Come Monday morning, I notified my electrician, Woodford Electric. And they come in and assess the building and all the wire and the plugs. And went down to the breaker panel, a fairly new service a couple of years ago. So much water and dampness. We ended up replacing all the breakers in the breaker panel. The only appliances that I know of that are lost is Steve's modem in the hot water tank, a small one, which will be replaced tomorrow. Hoping to test the furnace tomorrow is just a lot of moisture. So after Woodford, Fuchette and Woodford, I thank them for their great response. Were able to at Woodford clear the building through the wire inspector and Templeton Light Power to build them back up Monday afternoon. So Tuesday, I got hold, talking with the insurance agent. Got the okay to move forward. I notified Service Masters. I met the president out there yesterday, assessed the building and took moisture readings. It's anywhere from 70, 100% moisture still in the building. There was a couple of back areas with 20%. They came today. They set up about 20 blowers and a couple of dehumidifiers. They're going to bring some more blowers and dehumidifiers tomorrow. They removed all the insulation in the basement. They got to pull the ceiling down on the entryway and the floor. They got all the insulation out of the basement and the floor up today. And then they're going to remove all the insulation out of the attic. Once they get their asbestos test results back, which could be tonight. It's mandatory that they make sure the building is clear. With that being said, I'm talking with the insurance agent. Finally got a claim number. I'm still waiting for a callback from my adjuster. I left a couple of voicemails. Service Master, great response, great flight people, real professional. I'm impressed so far with their work. And down the road, once we get the building assessed of damages, I'm guessing it's going to be between 16 and 70, plus or minus $1,000 in damage. Especially with the prevailing wage and all that. Now, pretty sure I'm going to be going to Advisory Board asking for the $5,000 deductible for the insurance. That's what we have on our buildings. And spoke to Mike Dixon. So this was something for you all to think about. The building, the Templeton, considered somewhat a historical building. There might be a summary on it, but it's not registered as a historical building nor it's in the district of historical. With that being said, that cupola did a little fire damage, but there's a lot of rot and stuff up there. And my recommendation, I would like to see that removed. It's a water trap. It's a heat loss. If we could bring that down and cap it at the roof line. Church did the same thing a couple of years ago. But there's something for you guys to think about. As far as Mike knows, there's nothing holding me back from doing that if that's what we decide to do. I just don't know what the cost difference would be between the insurance repairing and what the actual cost would be to cap it in the roof that section. But it'd be well worth the time, this investment to do that. It'll be more economical in economy and heat. Like I said, there's a lot going on. And we can, I know we can't really discuss it now. This isn't important, but that's why I suggested to put it on the next agenda. But that's all I got right now. I plan on meeting, hopefully I get the adjuster will be out shortly. But the moisture, you can actually see it traveling through the dehumidifier. That's how much is in there. It's just amazing. But I think they can save the ceiling in the main room and the flooring is going to be questionable is where the water was puddled. I don't know what, until we get it dried out, see what happens. But there's very little warping in the hardwood floor. Thank you. Sorry.
Well, it would have been worse, could have been better.
Right.
There were people in it, so it could have been worse.
Yeah, it was split stop. You town and residents and put several hundred thousand dollars in that building. And we're at that point where we want to keep it. I want to make it something where you got all that money tied up.
I'm just glad nobody got hurt.
Yeah, that's the biggest thing. Steve was occupied, like I said, and nobody got hurt or energized. So there is a, it wasn't questionable. The threats are in there. It did get hit. They were only good for one hit. The hot water heater was taken out by water, not electrically. Steve's modem is more unlikely because of the cable wire wasn't properly grounded. So that's all I got for now. Bad enough?
I think so.
That's a that's
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Do you have anything tonight, Hope?
You do. I just wanted to echo Steve's comments. He stole my thunder on that Scout Hall. Thank you. Our team and the Gardner firefighters as well were excellent. Bob had let me know on the way back and I was able to call Jeff and let him know. And I'm glad no one was hurt and the damage was minimal. That's it. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. First item under new business, introduction of new employee. This is Bob for the Highway Foreman, Kevin DeScarles. Did I butcher that enough?
Good evening, Board. Bob's also from Templeton, T W. I'd like to introduce Kevin DeCaro. He lives right here in Ballinville. He's got multiple years' experience in municipality with sewer, water and highway. I want to welcome Kevin and I look forward to working with him.
Welcome, Kevin.
You want to
Welcome aboard.
Brenda, do you want to say anything?
Thanks for having me on board, Bob.
You can stay. You can either stay, leave or take my place. You don't leave.
So we have no appointments?
No.
Will we be getting them the next round?
Yeah, the next one will be the annual appointments.
The next item is, involves a joint meeting with the Advisory Committee. End of the year transfers, which are allowed by Massillon Launch Act 44, Section 33B. They can either be done by a town meeting or from May 1st to July 15th of any fiscal year. The Select Board is allowed to transfer money from interdepartments with the occurrence, concurrence of the Advisory Committee. We have two of them. The first one is from Town Clerk Carol Harris. The amount to be transferred is $6,000. And that would be moved from the Highway Personnel Account to the Town Clerk Purchase of Services. The Highway Personnel Count had a salary of $54,000 for a tree laborer, tree cut laborer. That person was not hired. So the first thing when this came up, and this came up as a result of a vote at the annual town meeting that the residents voted unanimously to move to electronic voting method at town meeting. The clerk has approximately $4,000 in her election grant. So this is going to, it's $95, $9600. It's below the $10,000, so it didn't have to go to capital. And in speaking with her and the moderator, and when I talked to the interim town administrator, I don't want this to become one of those things where we voted on it and then it gets set on the shelf for who knows how long. I don't want it to be forgotten about or, oh. And not only that, this will, this money will end up probably being encumbered. She's the Town Clerk, in order of the system. It comes with 100 clickers. Winchenden has the same system. They have like 500. The Town of Orange has the same system. So and the Town Clerks have reached out and we can borrow more if we need them. The company will come in this summer, once the system is bought and show how it works. And the Town Clerk indicated may even have like a practice run with some volunteers like they do with the voting machines each election year. Like I said, the money, she can order it, the money would be encumbered. And when the bill comes in, she can pay it and we won't have any late bills or anything like that. The other transfer is the Town Treasurer Collector. Again, it would come from Highway Personnel in the amount of $4,000. The 25 budget was apparently, it was a little tight. Also, the billing cost involved with the real estate bills, the cost went up like everything else. So she was short around $3,000. Her email. And again, this is to pay the report to Hilltop Financial, which tracks our debt, our bond rating and the investment from our stabilization funds and so forth. So to avoid, again, a late bill thing situation. This allows the bill to be paid in the fiscal year in a timely manner and not have these things hanging out there. And I did, at the beginning, I emailed Mr. Sosik. I emailed the accountant and got the balance in that fund. Mr. Sosik's secretary printed out. It's because the accountant had June 4th. I got this balance on Monday and she deducted the $10,000 from her payroll in case it passes. And there's $183,132.91 in the personnel. And that will cover the rest of the highways year. So that is, we can do them both at the same time.
The Chair, can I put my two cents?
We could do them both at the same time or individually, however you wish to do it. Mr. Sosik?
To the Advisory and for you, Mr. Chair. So yes, like Jeff mentioned, we had a tree labor position open. We're regionalized with Town of Winchenden with a written agreement between the two towns. We both got several applicants, but nobody really qualified at 100%. So Winchenden and Templeton are in full net agreement. That's why that money is here. There's other monies there. That's because I was pretty much short my foreman for almost three years. So the money is available for that transfer.
Thank you.
At this time, I would entertain a motion.
For us to go to Advisory.
I would like to ask my fellow members if they have any questions of either Blackboard or
No, it was explained very well. And it's explained really well, but the May 30, the expenditure ledger for ending May 31st was a different number.
It is about There was like a $200 difference in there.
Oh, it's just 200, okay. All right. This. All right. So it'll come down. So the ending balance would be like 172.9. I'm just questioning the numbers.
Right, the highway is showing 200 more than the accountant. Whatever the reason for that.
Well, there was, the last town accountant misclassified a couple of pays. So we're reclassifying them, trying to get it straightened up.
It's just that the numbers that Mr. Bennett gave and what I'm seeing at the end of May weren't weren't close.
And this don't really match too well until the end of the year. We're always ahead of town accountant. So especially with snow nights. Are there any further questions?
No, no.
I think the Chair would be ready to take a vote.
Two votes first, then a rose.
I can tell, but I'll just I move that, are we doing this?
No, we'll do it separately.
Separately, okay.
It's a follow.
I move that we move $6,000 from the Highway Personnel Account and to the Town Clerk Purchase of Services. So it goes from 1,000 dot 400 dot 000 dot by 1 dot 5100 to account 1,000 dot 161 000 dot 52 dot 5200, six grand.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussions? And who will call vote?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
I also vote yes. On the
21.
Yes, the lawyers, the selectmen go first and then the concurrents of the Advisory Committee. The way it is. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the financial transfer of $6,000 from the Highway Personnel to the Town Clerk Purchase of Services.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Castle?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
That motion passes at 6:58.
And Mr. Bennett, would you like a vote of concurrence?
I've signed the form and I'll give it to you. On the second transfer. On the second transfer of four thousand dollars from highway personnel to the treasurer purchase of services of four thousand dollars. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second, Mr. May. Any discussion? On the motion for the transfer, four thousand dollars from highway personnel to treasurer purchase services. How do you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Five yes. At seven P M. Advisory committee.
This time I will entertain a motion to the transfer of four thousand dollars from the highway personnel account to the treasurer, town treasurer's purchases of service account. Uh, ask for roll tall vote list.
Yes. Yes.
I also vote yes.
You don't have any other business, sir? You can adjourn the meeting and if you want to stay, you can stay.
This time I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seven, second.
Will I vote with?
Yes. Yes.
I also vote yes. I'll adjourn.
Next item on the agenda is the one-day live entertainment license for Valley View Farm. This is, uh, the carryover from the previous board at a meeting on, uh, May fourteenth before, uh, the annual town meeting. Uh, the board, uh, voted to approve a liquor license, single days for the, the dates that are in the packet. Pending, um, certificate of insurance. occupancy, I think, and the plan board had a hearing on it and, uh, the entertainment license. The entertainment license was was never completed, uh, for whatever reason. So that is why that is be in front of us tonight. The applicant has signed it. Mr. Matt Leclerc. There's a line to be signed by the chief of police, uh, above where the board would sign. I went and spoke with the chief on Monday. He was aware of the, the one-day liquor license and things, but he had not seen, uh, the entertainment license, uh, liability disclaimer. Do, do we have a the certificate signed by the chief or not?
We never get those signed by the chief. That's a really old form that I hadn't updated. I usually just check with him. However, Kelsey's kind of handling those now with all the duties that I've had to take on. So I, we hadn't reached out to him on this one, on the, on the live entertainment. I think because it sort of goes along with the liquor license, it's usually issued in concurrence with it. And he would, he was okay with those.
I, I, yeah, cause I thought it was gonna be on our last meeting, of the license, because it said we, we approved the liquor license and signed it pending uh, the certificate of insurance that we have there.
I believe it's in the file. Oh, he's got it. Okay. Wasn't sure if it was in the file. We do have his on file from his license. His on-premise license, I should say. Thank you. Not sure how the certificate of occupancy got thrown in that vote, but it's an outdoor area. It doesn't need a certificate of occupancy, so that was sort of.
He appeared before the planning board.
I've been working with Kirk in, in the planning board on the future of that facility. So yes, I've been, I've been in close contact with the planning board.
Because you were gonna do a, a pavilion or something?
Yeah, and that's still down the road.
Right, that's separate from this area.
They let the tent temporarily.
You're correct in that, yeah.
So is this, is this the correct form where the chief of police is supposed to sign it or?
It's the application. It's just an old one and we've never had them signed. I've always just reached out to him and got his opinion on it. And he always okay's them. He knows, he knows the people and um, so we've just never, we've just never had this signed. I need to take that off of there because what the board signs is the actual license, once it's approved.
Well, I, I understand that, but if, if the chief was supposed to see this, I, I, I don't want to sign something and then we're kind of like signing a blank form.
Yeah, we, nobody.
I know he hadn't seen it, so, uh, he was aware of the, he was aware of the one, one-day licenses and, and all of that, but he had, he had not seen this.
Right, but he's okay with it, right?
So it was, it was, that was my concern, uh, of why we were getting this before he had signed it, but it, so is, is this, you're saying this is like an old form?
We've never had him assigned and that's just the form that I got from the prior people years ago and, um, updated it a little bit, but I hadn't taken those off and we've never had him sign it. I just reached out to him and get an email from him.
Any concerns? I mean, anybody else on the board?
Mr. Drift?
Yes. Yeah, um, I have a concern and I came across this Saturday and I think you got a call for discussion on that. Simply because I was concerned that Matt had, had come before, presented, it was the May fourteenth meeting. Um, there was discussion, um, and the liquor license and such was listed as pending the signed live entertainment application. And I was concerned because the dates, um, went from May twenty-third, May thirtieth and June sixth, and this was on June sixth, so I believe there was three.
No, because I didn't have live entertainment the first two dots.
Okay, I didn't know, um, but you did have it on the sixth.
After I had submitted my application with the check, then and only then did I have what I had entertained.
Yep, no, I, I get that, um, but that was the concern and I did not know about the twenty-third and the thirtieth. Um, because it did say that there was going to be live entertainment and so forth.
That because I didn't have the permit, so I put music on instead.
Very, very good, good, but that was my concern and that's why I brought it up. Um, and, uh, you know, I just think, and I don't think any of this was on you. I think this was a problem internally. Um, that what was stated as the requirements at the last meeting didn't necessarily get followed as they should have been. Um, this is not on you. Um, so that was my concern with this process and, um, you know, I just, uh, think we need to do better in the future. Because, you know, if Matt wouldn't have been up to it, Matt would have just followed along, you know, he, he could be in a position that, you know, insurance isn't gonna cover if there's an issue, I would assume.
Mind shares is covered.
No, but I'm just saying if you didn't have the proper licenses, if that was denoted as you didn't have the licenses, but you did.
I think it was a far cry from having alcohol and having someone do play guitar, you know, I mean, that's a, is a big, there's a big difference there as far as like liability of sorts, you know what I mean?
Right, no, I, I agree with you, Matt, but I'm just saying that the way that the May fourteenth meeting went, it was pending your application signature and your application signature was on May twenty-seventh. Um, for this live entertainment. So the, uh, uh, way it was written in the May fourteenth meeting minutes, your liquor license was pending this signature. So technically, until May twenty-seventh, your liquor license shouldn't have been passed out. It should have been held according to the way that was written. So that's was my concern and that's why I said we need to do better, um, internally because, you know, that confuses the issues and creates a potential problem for vendors, you know, patrons. Um, and I don't think that's a good thing and I was just concerned. But that's my concern with this, was my concern, should say.
What was at that meeting and they, and it was pending on the license, you guys? Mr. Chair.
Still, anything?
Yeah, I, I also recall with, this was all hinging on the approval of the live entertainment and the one-day liquor licenses were pending. Uh, there was another question that I had. There, I noticed there are some traffic calming devices have been placed out on Friday afternoons and are collected in the evening. Uh, the chief of police was not aware that was happening when I had a quick conversation with him. But I do understand he did have a con, a conversation with Mr. Leclerc and offered assistance. He won't file the paperwork on his behalf, but did offer assistance if there, there's a requirement for a crosswalk from the parking area across the Berry Road down into where the pavilion area is. Matt, does that sound correct to you?
Pretty close, yeah. Um, I did speak with Chief Bennett about that. Uh, we were gonna discuss it. He was actually on vacation. So I did it via email, uh, texting, excuse me, and it, it's, it's been one week since then, so it was a one-day event. I just, I'm one week behind. I should have had it done a week ago. Um, I actually spoke with Chief Bennett and I actually spoke with Mr. Solzak about discussing that cross, potential crosswalk thing over there, so it's been addressed. Uh, one thing I was told by authorities that to slow cars down, throw a cone in the middle of the road. Because people fly down that road, we all live on it, we know what it is, so by putting a cone further down the road a couple of times, they, they and until this was addressed, I did something to s- cause, to slow the problem down.
It's not just indicative that road, they.
Great. Thank you for that, Matt.
Yeah, and, and I will, it'll be a priority tomorrow to speak with both people.
Anybody else have any concerns they want to question about? If not, I would entertain a motion on the one-day live entertainment license of Valley View Farm on the dates that I would use that.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Anything further? On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
I, yes. Uh, seven fifteen. You are all set.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt.
Have a good night.
Next item is action, uh, discuss making school street a two-way street. This comes, it's over by the MPZ Project Gilvolinville Elementary School. Years ago, that was a, a two-way street and when it was an active school, uh, between the parking on one side of the road and the buses coming down there, on that incline onto the State Road two oh two, uh, it was changed to a one-way street. I'm assuming now with the housing thing in there, they, uh, would like the two-way traffic back. I didn't see much i- in the packet on this, so again, I emailed the chief of police and asked him if he had, had had anything on this, had he, uh, been any talk about him and he said he'd been, uh, in communication with Holly, uh, Mr. Solzak and the fire chief, Dicky, and, you know, going back to two ways again. Uh, as long as the center striping gets in place before the road officially opens in, in two-way traffic. So we have someone from Ty Bond needing to talk about this.
Yeah, you have.
Alex.
Sorry, go ahead, Holly.
Alex Booth, Boothley?
Alex, he's from Ty and Bond. Uh, he's been the engineer of this project, working with Coractus. Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, uh, yeah, so, so I was asked by, uh, by Holly and Bob just to speak briefly on, on the matter here. Uh, so like I mentioned, I'm the, uh, project manager for Ty and Bond. Uh, I've been working with the town on the school street neighborhood roadway improvements over the past two years. Um, and just a brief, uh, overview of what this two-way conversion, uh, was and, and essentially it was um, done in a study by V A I transportation engineers on behalf of the MPZ School Street and Capstone Communities uh, development project. And in the study, they used traffic recorders and collected turning movement counts and performed an analysis on the intersections that surround the development. Ultimately, what they concluded is that the study showed that there would be no change in the level of service for the intersections that were uh, in the area, which includes Cottage at School Street, Cottage at Baldwinville and, uh, School Street and Maple Street. Our design plans and what's currently being constructed is, uh, suitable for two-way traffic flow on School Street. Um, and we actually anticipate that all the work is gonna be completed by June thirtieth, uh, which also includes Vernon as well, uh, and the ongoing work that's on Maple Street. Um, so I, I, I guess if there were any questions, I could, I could field the questions. And if not, I can, let me know, uh, if there's any comments.
Alex, if I may, um, to the chair, uh, how soon after they put the top coat, they're gonna be re-lining the street?
Yep, so, uh, so they, they need to wait at least forty-eight hours after paving the top course to let the oils uh, kind of settle back into the asphalt, uh, so our current plan is for early next week, likely the sixteenth or seventeenth for top course paving. Uh, so we would anticipate that either by the end of next week or, uh, early the following week, we would have the striping complete, but um, by that point, we would have signage likely installed around the same time. But that, that's the current plan.
Very good, thank you. Very good, thank you. Anybody on the board have any?
Yeah, I have some concerns. So I understand it's not a school anymore. But I had personal experience with it being a two-way. Then it was a one-way in one direction, then it was a one-way in another direction. When it was a two-way and they changed before they changed it, when we heard they were going to change it. Everybody had like, you know, who changed, nobody's going to change, people had some gripes. Um, and it didn't work the first time. They changed it in the one-way direction because it wasn't the right way. So then they changed it again to the opposite where it is now. My concerns are that um in that section, over the years, there was many, has been many um accidents. Uh, fender benders and stuff because people like to come up on either direction and they, when they go onto Baldwinville, they'll just. Make that um, they'll swing in, they don't stop, yield, and they just, you know, just go along and. They used to do, so now you had the ball, you had the school street, they were swinging in and you had the sw- uh the Baldwinville and they were swinging in. So now we only concentrate, everybody's concentrating on that one road going in. Um, when you change things in opposite directions like that, it does affect people. Um, you see that in the other towns. Um, they have a hard time adjusting to it. Um, and and then you're going to have with the apartments, you're going to have extra traffic. Even though it's not a school anymore, you're still going to have visitors. You're going to have like deliveries from Amazon and stuff, so it's going to be highly more trafficked. Um, whereas the school was isolated by certain times of the day. And this will be all day long, back and forth, coming in and out of that direction. And I just um have some concerns on like, I don't know what the um. You know, before, when it was a two-way, h- how much did uh the accidents in in that section change and lessen? Since it hasn't been for many years, um, you know, did it stabilize? You know, will this, that's my concern. I just don't want to see, um, it was. I I used to go to the school to bring my children and there was always somebody having a problem in the intersection. Um, they just didn't pay attention to that second, secondary road. Um, when you're coming from Maple or if you're coming from, you know, Village Pizza, the uh Elm Street the other way, either way. It's mostly the village people um coming from the Village Pizza area from Elm Street when they just seem to like to. Take that left quick, you know, they don't like to spot, even though with the blinking light, they don't like to pause and that's where. Most of those back in the day and you're talking, this is a while since it's been changed, but there was quite a bit of issues because of that. And that's just my concern. I don't want to see that happen again.
What about pedestrian control? Is there any sidewalks or is there plans for sidewalks?
Yeah.
There is new sidewalk on Cottage and going down School Street, which ties into the sidewalk. Going towards Baldwinville and there, there are several areas of crosswalk. Down at the corner of Central. Maple. Believe, is, there's no crosswalk on school, is there, Alex?
Uh, so that there used to be a crosswalk that led directly to the school front steps. Um, that is what we would consider a mid-block crossing is not totally desirable. Um, so what we actually did is uh because we know that there's going to be some some pedestrian traffic crossing to the parking area. That was largely maintained on School Street over to the development. Uh, we actually proposed a safer location for that crossing, which is going to be up closer to the. Uh, we'll call it the upper School Street Development uh parking lot entrance. So you have much better sight visibility lines there and it's a flatter location, so you're not dealing with. Uh, non ADA compliant ra- uh ramps and slopes. So we're able to put a crosswalk there that should be able to handle uh the pedestrians that want to cross. To get from the Housing Authority side over to the school side and then there's also a crosswalk at the Cottage Street and School Street intersection. Um, I'll say that also Baldwinville at Cottage, the crosswalk and ramps are being improved there. Uh, Vernon Street, which isn't necessarily part of this um discussion, but that's part of uh my project, we're also improving crosswalks there. Uh, and there is no crosswalk being proposed down at School Street at Maple that crosses school. Because there's no sidewalk to get to uh the west side of School Street that uh down there. But we are tying into the sidewalk that is in front of the fire department.
About parking on School Street, how will that be? Will they be allowed to park on either w- both sides or one side?
So, so there's, there's no uh parallel parking on street. The only parking that is allowed is going to be, uh, we'll call them dedicated parking stalls on the Templeton Housing Authority side. Uh, that was largely to help maintain the parking that is currently used by them now. Uh, and also to accommodate some parking from the development. Um, so it's largely going to be a similar format, except there's no parking on the school side of the roadway or any parallel parking. Sorry?
Is that going to include visitor parking?
Um, I, I'm not exactly sure what the plans are for the development. Um, but I know that the the Housing Authority had a, an interest in maintaining that for, for their use.
Mister May?
Um, I was wondering if somebody could speak to the. Uh, what do you want to call me, the feeder roads or exit roads um going to and from School Street? As to the width and the on-street parking. Um, because, you know, I I know you stated that the traffic survey. Said very little change and so forth, but we are going to be putting fifty-plus units up there, so I'm assuming fifty to seventy cars. Um, so that is going to increase the traffic there and you're either going to come in or out of Cottage, Vern. Um, one of those streets and, you know, what's the parking situation on the street? Because those streets from looking earlier today on the GIS map. Appear to be, you know, just a little over twenty feet wide. Um, and I'm thinking, you know, car, two cars on the side. Um, it's, you know, bottlenecks wherever there's cars parked. Um, the second part of my, this is a more of a concern and this dates back to when. Using my memory, when this was changed over to a one-way. Was the big concern at the time was coming from, let's say, the fire station. Area on, what is it, two oh two?
Yep.
Um, coming from there and turning up into School Street in the wintertime. Because cars don't make it. Um, you know, and with, we're still going to have buses on that road in the morning because there's going to be kids. You know, there's still, let's say, traffic, trucks, deliveries, um, and so forth. And uh, just kind of concerned about with the two-way traffic, what kind of a nightmare we're going to cause at that turn. Um, on two oh two uh during the winter. Um, because I mean, I I believe that was one of the main reasons why it was changed. Um, and nothing's changed with the hill, um, nothing's changed with the access point. Um, you know, the use has changed for the school, but uh, you know, that's about it. And uh, I don't know how. Let's say diminished, the traffic flow is going to be from, let's say, the school compared to. The building at different times of the day. Um, because I would imagine, you know, you got fifty to seventy cars that uh. You know, good percentage of them are going to be going to work, probably the same time, coming home from work at the same time. Um, you know, just a concern. I uh can see the, say rationale for it. Um, but I just. I'm not sure that it's. A wise move for myself.
Mister Solzik?
Mister Chair, um, as when we started this project, we. Had a, a, a meeting, a couple of meetings, neighborhood meetings and we. Presented the, the two-way change several times through this project. Another problem is at the way it was before, yes, the sidewalk was disarrayed and. Uh, it looks like me, should we open a self mail here? Now we established a nice sidewalk. Working with the postmaster. Mailboxes. Are going on, going on the other side of the street. Mister Toth knows we have several problems with these mailboxes on sidewalks. Preventing us from clear properly clearing them and the post office is very difficult to work with on this matter. Um, this will get the mailboxes on the other side of the road where they belong. Able to pu- have the post uh deliveries up and down both sides. Um, I don't know how much visitor parking the project has, I don't have to look at their plans. But they did project some visitor parking over there and I don't know what their mailbox. Situation, if it's going to be a group mailbox out in the yard somewhere or what, but. It was proposed that we're moving mailboxes and adjusting mailboxes due to the, the new constructions and new sidewalks.
Well, the, the mailboxes, I mean, but who were the mailboxes for? The apartment building is going to have their own section of mailboxes, probably somewhere um located safely for the residents. Um, and then across the street is another apartment building, so I'm, I'm not really understanding.
Houses that are going to remain on that road.
Yeah, the two houses, but that's not a lot of.
They were on sidewalk side, now we're going to put them on the opposite side.
The opposite side on a one, it's, but the one way is going down Cottage down school. And in a one way that the post office vehicle can still service the other side.
Other side, they, they would have to come up the hill versus going down.
But it's a one way, so he can go on either side of the road, he can drive in the middle of the road.
If it, if you keep it at one way, the mailboxes are going to go on the sidewalk and it's going to create a problem again. We, we worked with the post office and got permission and talked with the homeowners to properly move the mailboxes. On the other side of the road.
So where it narrows down at the end to go into, at the bottom of School Street across the two houses. You'll come up now off of School Street and now there'll be mailboxes on the right side where there's no, no, um. On the right side where there's no, no um sidewalk and the left side will have the sidewalk. And it's already narrow as it is, because it comes down narrow. I mean, did the wa- did the road get wider?
For two-way traffic.
You know the width down there off here, Alex?
Yep, yes, so the, the total width of the road is twenty-four feet wide. The other streets are twenty feet, that's Vernon and Cottage, but School Street was intentionally left a little bit wider in the design. To accommodate uh traffic and, and what Bob is talking about here.
Well, I just know that when they go into Baldwinville Road and they take the, they come off, um, the coming down Elm, they're coming down past Village. They bang that, they bang that, even though the lights there, they bang that left onto Baldwinville and many of them don't stop. And they're going to do the same thing with School Street and now you've got mailboxes there and they, and I know this because I live in a road where. And when you take that left on, on my road, I have to pull over and wait for someone to come down the road because it's not narrow enough. And um, or because people, you know, it's scary, they'll, they'll swing, you know? So that's just my concern, I just feel, um, that's just my personal opinion. I just feel like, um. You know, I, we haven't seen a lot of issues down there. I mean, I haven't heard of a lot of, I mean, they could have been. Um, but I know that back in the day when it was a two-way. Every ti- um, many times when I would bring my child, like it would be slippery and like he had to, um, Bob had talked about. Um, but um, that was, you know, and I was one of those people that I thought, oh, why are they changing this? It should be a two-way. Um, and then when they changed it to the one way, they had gone, they, they had gone the other way, they went up school and then they went down the other way. And then that, it did, that was, did not work. So that's when they reversed it the other way and they, the way it is currently. Um, and that's when I seen, you know, after like doing it a few times, I was like, oh, I get it why we did it, you know? But it was one of those people because I came from the, I came through tw- two oh two, so it was easier for me just to take that right. You know, so I was like, but then when I had to go up and around, I was like, and I sat, you know, you sit there, wait for your children, you st- you start watching it, you see why they did it. So I just, I'm concerned about the actual traffic down there.
Mister Chair, if I may, uh, also, yes, we did have a lot of icing on that hill. Due to hydraulic pressure and a lot of water. Um, Alex and Karakas and myself, they, they put in several sub-drainage. It picked up all this extra groundwater and tied it into the, the storm drain. And the highway bound also um put piping up along Maple Street with the water that was breaching out of the bank and. And hopefully going to take care of that, so it should be a big improvement on that.
And I'll just add, oh, I'm sorry. Um, can I say something? Um, I'll, I'll just add that we, we did do a lot of sub-drain work and uh. Improvements to the soil that was underneath the roadway there, there's, there's a lot of clay which is holding up a lot of water. Um, so we, we over-excavated some areas of that road to improve that and replaced it with a free-draining gravel. And added several sub-drain systems to connect to also a new drainage system. What was out there previously was uh a combination of two to three separate drainage lines. That didn't necessarily pick up a lot of the surface water that was traveling on the roadway. Uh, which was likely a, a big factor in the amount of icing and freezing that was happening on the roadway. Uh, so with this project, we, we hopefully have addressed all of that. Um, and then just a, another side comment is, at the bottom of School Street, we, we actually did o- open that up a little bit more. To accommodate uh right turn movements for delivery vehicles, other vehicles of that nature. To uh not necessarily impede on the adjacent oncoming traffic, so people taking a right. Off of Maple Street onto School Street, um, this is essentially a larger swing radius for people to get in there. And not to have conflicts with people that are stopped at the stop sign at the bottom of school trying to make a left or right turn movement.
Thank you.
Just one follow-up, um, do we know the status of the parking on Cottage Street and Vernon? Is that going to change or is that just going to be open parking on the street as it is now, basically?
That be a police chief.
Okay, but that has not been determined or?
By now, if you have a dr- usually driveway, like it says sidewalks, it didn't. Prevent a couple of people that pull up on the curb and off, try to get off the road, but um. I don't know if the police chief uh addressed any of that or will address it if it becomes a problem.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
What exactly is the reasoning for wanting to make it a two-way?
That would be.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Wha- what's the reasoning exactly for wanting to make it a two-way instead of keeping it a one-way?
So, so that's all based off of the study that was performed um for the development. So essentially, uh, the project that I'm working on is based on those assumptions and, and the town um. Being willing to accommodate the two-way. Um, but essentially, it's, I believe it would be for accommodating the. Traffic for the development and allowing that to be two-way, so that people can access the development from School Street or Baldwinville.
Mister Chair?
Yes, Mister Toth?
I do recall a very similar discussion about two years ago before we got into the infrastructure upgrades. Of waters, who were moving electrical poles, everything else. And when we left the Baldwinville Elementary School groundbreaking yesterday, I went down School Street specifically. When I made the turn onto Maple, I noticed the do not enter sign is no longer there. So if you're coming from Baldwinville Center toward that area, it openly appears you could just drive on through. And I know we have not yet made a determination on that. And unless I missed it, but I was looking pretty diligently for it.
There were a few vehicles that came up from Maple. Which would essentially right now be going the wrong way, but there was, I, I saw like three or four.
And that was a, that was a fairly common occurrence when I was serving time, working with the fire department. We would occasionally see vehicles do that anyway, but again, you're right, that was against the flow of traffic as intended.
Thank you, Mister Toth. There's nothing further. I would entertain, entertain a motion on making School Street a two-way street.
Second.
Motion by Mister May, second by Mister Toth. Any further discussion? Hearing none. On the motion, how would you vote, Mister May?
Yes. Yes.
Miss Graves?
No.
Miss Vassal?
No.
Mister Toth?
Yes.
And I'm going on a coffee break. The one thing we can do that we don't have now is. Actual data as far as traffic. And this is allowed to.
To change the travel on the roads by Mass General Law, Chapter eighty-two, Section twenty-one. So when we actually have this built and we actually have cars going in and out of there. Uh, we will gather the data and perhaps we come back and change it back, uh. I don't have a crystal ball, so um. I will vote yes. And we will just track the data. When the project is complete and. We have a couple of winters. Under our belts and perhaps it comes back to us to change or maybe it doesn't. So that motion passes. Three yes, two no's. At seven forty. That note, Mister Bolshon? Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Maybe we'll see you on this subject down the road.
Have a good night, Bob.
You too, thank you.
Thank you.
Item F. To make a. Moderate Advisory Board Representative. In the past, this was uh, the former Town Administrator, Adam Montane. And she has left. They're looking for. For rep. Do you have any interest or?
We do, we do, I had had Kelsey reach out to Jackie and Ryan. This is something that the past Senior Center Director used to do before Town Administrator ended up with it. And Ryan Brown would like to do it, the Senior Center Manager, should like to be appointed. Going to their monthly meetings, basically.
Yeah, their monthly meetings are on Zoom and they're um, usually at ten o'clock and usually on a Tuesday, I looked into it. And they're only an hour. I looked into it, I was kinda surprised.
Anybody have any concerns on that, uh?
No, I think Ryan would do a good job.
And if you don't, I would. Entertain a motion. On the appointment.
Oh, one thing, will she report to us any things that we need to know from being on the board?
So you just had that, that one?
Yeah, just Ryan, I'm sure she would, I could, I can ask her to send a.
Like, like how often, like what we want, like an update from her? Like it could go, like if we appointed her. We should send that back so she under, she would know that we would want something, maybe?
Let's see, where's she said that down? How often did, do you know how often they met?
I think it was always monthly.
Monthly, so like, like MRPC and them?
Yep.
And. So we could get a, uh, we could get a meeting schedule and then. If the board request, we can have an update. Depending how it hits with our. Our meetings, like today there was an MJTC meeting, next Monday there's a new meeting, so. I'll, I'll send out email, you know, updates after those, cause it doesn't.
We could also, we could also ask her to, um, put it in a quarterly. What's gone on for that quarter with those meetings?
I mean, I read an email just to give us like a synopsis, so we have it on, like we could read it into our agenda or something. Like she doesn't have to physically comment, I mean, unless we thought we'd have questions, I guess. I don't know what questions she'd have, since it's not our board, yes.
I know, so your point person, then uh, we can get a, a meeting schedule and then. See what it is and then. I put it on the agenda for just as an update thing or. Uh, unless a, an email would be fine, but uh, either or.
I think we'll set a question.
Yes.
If, if I may suggest that. If, if you go back to doing the weekly TA reports. That she just published it in there, so it's in a timely manner and not on a quarterly basis after a, the time has gone past.
I like that, really?
Yeah, that sounds good, thank you.
So. First we have to appoint, then we'll find out the, the meeting schedule from the individual, get them to email and then. Uh. We can take it from there.
I would like to appoint. Oh, I forgot where I was. I'd like to appoint um, uh, Ryan Brown as the um, MRTA Advisory Board Representative. To a term expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty twenty-five.
Should that be twenty-six?
Oh, uh, we doing it for?
It should be twenty-six.
Oh, twenty-six, sorry.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mister Toth, you have anything?
No, I don't have anything, I'd just like to make sure that the individual is indeed interested. And if they're not, we can revisit this at a future meeting.
Thank you, sir. Anything else from the board? If not on the motion. How would you vote, Mister May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Vassal?
Yes.
Mister Toth?
Yes.
I vote yes. At seven forty-seven. Next item is item G, Vacation rollover. We have two individuals requesting to roll over. Vacations. Into the next fiscal year. Uh, the Fire Chief is requesting to roll over. Sixty hours for the next fiscal year. The interim Town Administrator Holly Young is requesting to roll over thirty-eight hours of vacation time. To the next fiscal year. Uh, I have a note on both. Is there funding to cover the additional vacation time? In both. The Select Board's budget and the Fire Department budget.
There's no additional cost. We're both salary. And whether we work or take vacation, we get paid the same.
So we're just getting, we'll just have them less time for the year.
Any concerns from any, any other concerns from the board?
Well, I personally, when it comes to Chief Dickey, and based on. The type of job he has. And the situation, why he had so much time left. Um. I would, I, I mean, it, it's one of those jobs that you really need to have that. Those vacations, um, the things that you can acar- um, acquire and. For your emotional well-being, um. You know, being the Fire Chief, um. I personally feel like in, in this situation where Chief Dickey, I, I feel like. I think he would have u- used his vacation time if he could have. Um. And I feel like that he should be allowed to have some, um, for the following year to keep it, that's just my. I just thi- I just have a personal thing with them. Those who serve in these kind of jobs having the, um. The ability, um, to have these times off that they need, especially for their well-being. Um. Cause of the kind of job it is and the things that they can see. Um, I think is very important, um, and you know, due to his letter and why he couldn't take the time off. Um, you know. It, it makes a lot of sense, and there was, there's more to, I had heard, um, I believe there's more that wasn't listed in this letter. About him too. Um, that had come up in the year, um. And that's just my, you know. I just, my belief.
Mister Toth?
I believe we've had this discussion in the past, while I understand the spirit and intent and the requests being put in for. In front of us, I do have to echo Ms. Graves' concerns. Vacation is there so the individuals can get some time and some respite from the workplace. You know, I understand circumstances arise, but I also. Look at this, having worked many, many positions myself where you were bumped up to a use it or lose it scenario. And I lost many more hours than I ever. Was able to take, but it's part of the planning for yourself, you know, map things out, how are you going to go? Yes, I do understand there are extenuating circumstances. But I, I also do have that concern, we need to be taking care of ourselves first, that applies to each and every employee.
Thanks, sir. Mister May?
I would concur with what Mister Toth just said, um. As I look at it, um, you know, in either one of these scenarios. Um, the managers that are asking for. The carryover the time, um, had. Half a year or a third of a year to take their vacations. Um, even after. The situation that they're talking about here. And um, that to me should be plenty of time to. Let's say, schedule the appropriate time off because as, again, as Mister Toth stated. Um, vacation time is for rest, to recover, um, to. Basically facilitate your emotional and mental health so that you're a better. Employee for the town. And uh, I think it needs to be prioritized. And um. Uh, that's where I stand on it.
Thank you. There's nothing else, I would entertain a motion. For vacation rollover for sixty hours for the Fire Chief and. Thirty-eight hours for the interim Town Administrator.
I would like, um, to see it separated. In two different votes.
I'll make a motion, I'll move to approve the rollover of the specified amount of vacation time for the interim. TA Holly Young and the Fire Chief Dave Dickey.
Second.
Second by Mister Toth. There's no further discussion?
Yes. So I feel like these are very, um, very important positions. So we're rolling over a week and a half vacation for the Fire Chief. And then almost a week vacation for. Uh, for Miss Young, um. But then they are also gonna cure vacation. A group vacation for the rest of the year.
Yes.
Now, how long can we go in function correctly without? You know, if they haven't, if they haven't decided to take their vacation time when it's allotted or when it's.
That was, that was one of the things, a- and I made a point about that.
Yeah.
Specifically. If you have, say, just, you have four weeks vacation this year and you couldn't take it and you, you have two left over. How are you gonna take six weeks next year? That's, that was my point, uh, when this came up. Several years in a row, so.
Now, how long can we go without a Fire Chief? In, you know, working or without a. Administrative position.
Mister Chair, can I comment? So the vacation is either gonna be taken by June thirtieth or it's gonna be rolled over. I'm personally not gonna lose my vacation time, so I understand your point. I think it's gonna be easier to spread out that extra week, adding it on to my four for next year. Where I didn't plan on having a grandson and spending the time with him before Adam left and had it allotted like that. So it's gonna be easier to space out next year instead of being gone basically every day for the rest of the month. It's extenuating circumstance, that's the only reason I brought it, it's the only reason I suggested that we bring it. We haven't done it in years because we've all agreed it should be an extenuating circumstance, I just wanted to state that.
In some jobs, they have a thing where you have so much for the year and you have to use some by the first part of the year and some by the second part of the year. So it doesn't. There isn't so much, you know, cause sometimes people will hold off because they like the nicer weather or. You know, I know, I know, that's, that's happened since some jobs. What is the, um, I didn't see anything on the policy on what our, is ours just the whole, they can go anytime during the year? And you can do is like some jobs saying you can only take so much in a block, you say you get five weeks or something, you can only do. So much on one side and so much on another, you can't put them all together and be out of work for a long period of time. Do we have a policy on that?
No. Also keep in mind that the unions are allowed. To do this without coming to the board, so there's that benefit. Again, for the unions.
Mister Toth, you have anything further?
Yeah, I, I've heard both sets of comments, um. I'm not convinced we can dictate when an employee should take vacation as Ms. Graves was suggesting. And no, I'm not familiar with any policy that would state such. That doesn't mean it's not out there, I'm just not familiar with it. And again, I understand these are extenuating circumstances, but. As was just highlighted and illustrated, in the past, we have tended to not approve such requests, this is a little unique. Along the lines of some others that have been presented, just, just my thoughts and comments.
Thank you. All right, having discussed this, we have a motion and a second. So on the motion, how would you vote, Mister May?
No.
Ms. Graves?
I'll say yes.
Yes. Ms. Vassal?
I vote no.
Mister Toth?
Reservably and reluctantly, I vote yes.
I will vote yes. And I will be bringing the personnel policy forward for a consideration of changes and amendments to the board on a future date. That motion passed at eight o'clock. The next item is item H. It's a discussion item. I had mentioned this at the last, last meeting. It's, uh, concerning the, uh, distribution of free cash and the percentages of where they go. In, uh, two thousand nineteen, the policy read fifty percent was reserved for working capital and, and that would, had been used for, uh, to fund capital items, to, uh, cover the snow and ice, uh, deficit that usually occurs. As well as backing up the general fund budget with various articles, either late bills or amending the budget, uh, covering various things. Then, it changed to on July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, uh, there was an addition to an infrastructure stabilization fund. And it went to, uh, sixty percent reserved for working capital and other needs, which would be funding capital things, buying trucks, this, that, uh, covering the snow and ice deficit, uh, any late bills, um, some special articles set mine aside, uh, and again, covering the general fund, uh, budget. Then in September, uh, twenty-seven, then twenty twenty-three, after it had been, uh, discussed on the board, it was sent to the advisory committee. They agreed with it. It was changed to sixty-seven percent reserved for working capital. And the corresponding percentages dropped. So we ended up putting less money in the capital stabilization, infrastructure, the general stabilization fund and the OPEB. And as that stands right now, sixty-seven percent basically is funds that the TA can use to cover different things. Then ten percent was going into capital stabilization and ten percent was into the infrastructure stabilization, eight percent in the general stabilization fund and five percent for OPEB, which is the other, uh, it really basically retiree health insurance. So we are spending more of our free cash, which is basically unspent appropriations expenses during the fiscal year or an unexpected revenue. Say you, you budget for one point two million in motor vehicle excise tax and you collect one point three. That is unexpected revenue that goes into your, your free cash. A general stabilization fund is an indicator for the bond rating companies of what kind of condition we are in. We also have recommendations from two financial, uh, management studies from the Department of Revenue. And they'd recommend that the town s- stop using free cash to support the general fund budget. And in putting less money into our general stabilization, as well as the other stabilizations, we are earning less investment income. We just took out four hundred and thirty thousand last year out of our general stabilization to cover school bill, the school assessment for the year. The bigger that general stabilization fund balance is, generally speaking, you assume you, the greater the investment income. If you generate a good amount of investment income, that is further money that we could leverage. Sort of like the cemetery's perpetual care funds. They cannot touch the principal. But whatever interest they earn, they can use, they can buy lawnmowers, they can do maintenance. They, they could have a, a company come in and mow all the grass in the cemetery. There's two cemeteries, they both have, they each have a perpetual care fund that they can use to maintain those cemeteries. If we would start taking money out of the general stabilization fund to pay a regular recurring bill and you put more money in there instead of less percentage wise, you earn more investment income. And you could leverage some of that past town meeting to take out some of the interest, transfer it into the capital stabilization to, so we could maybe actually have a budget for the capital items and then we could have a plan because we would actually build up our capital stabilization by increasing the percentages that we place in those funds. The infrastructure stabilization fund. It, it's chapter ninety, funding from the state is never going to cover everything. And if you need money for design, if you need money for, for drainage or this or that, we are not going to get there by reducing the amount of money we put into these funds. And this is the second time I have brought this forward, uh, to point these things out. And I would hope be bringing this in front of the board for, to consideration to re- to readjust the percentages, uh, to a, I'm almost like an eighty-twenty split, seventy-thirty, but more in the town savings accounts and less, uh, because the more that you have that you this, this big money, unassigned money. And the more app, I believe, you say, well, I, I'll do that. I won't worry about that because I'm going to have the free cash. We're, we're hurting ourselves. We're hurting any kind of financial plan think we have. And again, uh, bond ratings, look at this, uh, if we could build up these funds, the better off we would be. It, it's, we, we keep taking more and more out of the paycheck and, and losing this. And then I, I think you get away from budgeting accurately and, and tightly like we need to do. Because Templeton is not alone. The municipalities, uh, the, the funding, it, everybody's hurting the money. All money is like, and also the more money that we have set aside, if something does happen where the state reduces their state aid to the town. And we are dependent on that. We are dependent on real estate taxes, our local receipts. The biggest one is motor vehicle excise tax and then all the fees. And then state aid. And then you list grants down there. So it, it seemed like we're putting less money aside and we're, we're spending more when we should be doing the opposite, in my opinion. And what these things did is actually given us some data. You can go look at the town meetings and see the amount of money that we have been putting in these various funds since it went to sixty-seven percent and then look at the dates when it was sixty percent and then look at the dates when it was fifty percent. That is the reason that, uh, I brought this forward. This is, I don't know, the previous board, I brought it forward and, and pointed this out, uh, and now, um, I brought my thoughts in front of you all and I'd like to hear what, uh, the rest of the board thinks. Mr. May? I'll just go in order.
Yeah, um, how much time do we got?
Yeah, uh, I, I fully concur that we need to readjust this, um, there's been, oh, let's see, if we go back to when we started the, um, stabilization accounts, um, when I believe Carter was here and we were talking about how to fund them. Um, I think we originally started out at three percent of the omnibus budget is what we were looking for in stabilization. And then we moved it to five and then we moved it to eight. And the plan was to move it to twelve. But when the administration changed, the administration decided that we've reached our goal and now we can spend money. Um, we've also increased the amount or the, let's say, uh, accounts that are drawing off this. We've gone from three to four, um, you know, uh, uh, other than the, uh, working capital issue, um. And I don't know if anybody else on the board here wa- did the webinar, um, on introduction, I think it was the town finance that they had up last week. But, um, you know, if you go by that, we're best case scenario, we're behind the eight ball and we're trying to use too little money to do too much. Um, because from what I read and what I heard during this webinar, um, was the suggestion was more to be three to five percent, um, for free cash. Period. And then if you were going to include stabilization, maybe five to seven and a half or five to eight. And then if you were going to include the reserve account, um, anywhere from eight to twelve, um. And we're using five percent and we're knocking it down to, I believe, under two when we take out the sixty-seven percent. So we're using two percent of our omnibus budget to try and fill our stabilization accounts, which is insufficient anywhere you look to for information. Um, and we're seeing the results of that. Um, you know, we don't have any capital this year, uh, in our, our budget um, to speak of. And that is a direct result of this policy change. You know, um, Mr. Bennett, uh, referenced eighty-twenty. Um, I would say, you know, after removing the, uh, suggested snow and ice, that it'd be more like a ninety-ten split from there. Um, ninety percent going into the, you know, general stabilization, capex, infrastructure and OPEB. Um, and we, in turn, this would allow us to actually create a capital improvement plan rather than a capital ordering system. Um, which I think the town's been failing on consistently. Um, and utilizing free cash, um, you know, in the way we have been, um, has gotten us to where we are. Um, just plain and simple. So I concur a hundred percent that we need to revisit this. Um, I think, you know, uh, some input from uh, the board, maybe even the advisory committee, um, and come up with a more workable number that actually, um, benefits the taxpayer. Um, because that is who we work for. Um, and with that, I guess I'll just say I agree that we should put this on for more discussion or a adjustment. And thank you.
Ms. Graves?
I disagree that we should be looking at this. I don't think it's been working correctly. I don't think we should have used the free cash the way we did this to fix our budgets for the last couple of times. Um, it wasn't designed that way. Um, and now, I mean, it was, you put in for something for capital and now there's not even anything there for it. I mean, we're not, I mean, we see, we seen it with, um, which, which department was it? Like, there's not like, um, the water department with the pipe, like, there's no plan, like, there's no future, looking at the future, like, you know, things break down. You're not, you're not budgeting correctly. It's just, it's just not working the way it's, it definitely, the free cash is a definite issue and we definitely need to be putting this on an agenda and coming up with something better, I think, um. And I don't think it should be just our board. I think advisory, um, if they, I mean, know that they've been working on it over the last year or so, talking about it and had some, um, thoughts on it. Maybe sport and stuff, but and maybe the people in general in the town, the residents, you know, what their thoughts are. You know, how we've been, how we've been using free cash. Um, and how we've been setting up those accounts. I mean, I always like to hear from them, what they, their thoughts are too. And I really don't have any detailed things that I want to say in my mind right now, out loud.
Ms. Bassel?
Yeah, no, I, I definitely agree. I it definitely is an overhaul. We're going to sit down and break down, just look at everything. We'll figure it out when we go. I agree with you.
Mr. Toth? Thoughts?
Yep, we definitely need to look at redistribution of these funds, changing some of these percentages. And to your point on, we never know what's coming down the pike from the state this last fiscal year and the one we're about to jump into once that we get everything finally approved on House One. There's been a lot of discussion that UGA would not be funded. The unspecified governmental general assistance, if I remember the acronym correctly. Uh, at its inception, that was like an eleven to twelve percent of our overall budget was the magic formula the state would give us. It never kept up with inflation. They've given us the same amount each and every year when they have doled it out. When you actually sit and crunch the numbers, it's somewhere around the sixth or seventh percentile. So to sit there, it's just like, let's just spend the free cash as we get it built up. We can't rely on UGA to come in. And I looked at it, just as our policy says, it's another one-time money coming in that what should we be doing with it? So there are some more questions than there are answers in my mind.
Thank you.
Yellow, well Winchester Street. Um, you know, proposition two and a half is way out of line with today's world. You know, we, and Templeton was the lowest tax rate in the state when it was passed. And inflation hasn't kept up with, and you can't rein in the expenses going up that we have with only two and a half percent. And we've consistently had to use free cash even though we were told not to. And at town meeting, many voters did say, you know, we thought we weren't supposed to use free cash. And, you know, I did suggest at town meeting that we should have little overrides. Take that four hundred thousand and ask for an override. And that way you're maintaining your free cash. And I know overrides aren't, aren't popular, but it's a small one. It's not millions of dollars.
No, it's, uh,
And, and it's two and a half.
Last one we did was in two thousand eighteen. The one we did before that was in two thousand thirteen.
You know, and I realize what you're trying to do, you know, the, You know, and I realize what you're trying to do, you know, the administration here is trying
We also can't, you also can't bring up an override like in February. Cause people just go
Yes, they do.
Yeah, we'll see you later.
No, that's one way, that's, you either have to use it, or you, or you cut, or you override. Or, well, you said there were other things besides an override. Was it left? An exclusion? There are other things you can do there.
We, we just, like you said, the one thing that it did do, it's, we now have a record of the amount of money that we've been putting in, the stabilization funds, we've been rolling down, along with the last couple of years. The free cash is less, it's, it's under a million, it, it, two years in a row. And in this past year's eight sixty-eight was, that was some, that was some moving some things around. That just wasn't from the budget. So, along with, if that's, you know, the, the trend is down or leveling out, you'd want to put more away because the trend isn't going up. It's level going down, so. The next item is item I, the action item tracker.
Yes.
I'm Ms. Graves, and this is for the board's operating procedures, is a task for the last year, recently clarified a few months back.
Yeah, there's an action tracker I'm supposed to do. So I sent out, when I asked if he put on the agenda, I sent out a draft that I did, an Excel. Of course, it's not like really easy to like make a copy and send it already. So I sent it, and I tried my best, and I guess nobody got it. So I sent everybody individually so they could look at what it was, what I was working for. So I all had limited data, so I only had the meeting that I had to go off of. So in my tracker that I designed, I just put, I used like the minutes, cause it was an action, you voted on it. So I used the minutes as a part of my example in it, and some other items, you know, like, and then I also put in like the votes and stuff. So it kind of came off like minutes itself, my tracker, but it was just, you know, Tim has sent me some stuff that was, I guess, part of some of the things from the past, and some action items. My thing about the tracker is, you know, is it like, is it, because you have your goals, you have your, you have a goal thing, like, you could say, like, you can say the fire department has been looking for a new truck, such, such truck, and you, that's, you know, where a goal is to try to raise the funds, the capital to buy said truck. But if you didn't vote to do it, then, or you didn't make an action for it, you know, does it go on the action tracker, or does it go on the goal tracker? And then you have the minutes, does the minutes go with the clerk? Would that be part of a new policy on the clerk? So I wasn't really sure. But I just use the information, some of the information as my, my tracker. So I just wanted to get some guidance on how people would like to see their action tracker done, and in what format, if, if the Excel format, you know, or if it just wanted it just like written down on a piece of paper. I wasn't really sure. So I tried my best.
Any input from the board? Something to, to work on, come up with ideas? Mr. Thoth, anything?
Nope, that was summed up very nicely. When we tried this in the past, we had a list of items. Ideally, you would have a person of contact or a person responsible. We never really got it fully off the ground, and that was a couple of chairmans and a few vice chairmans, and the fault is all over the place. But yeah, we definitely need to wrestle this one to the ground to get it under control. I like the comment Ms. Graves added about the goals. I would add that goals need to be in the SMART format. Sustainable, measurable, attainable, realistic, and timely. And if they don't meet those five criteria, is it truly a goal? And that's just one thing to look at as we move it forward.
Thanks, sir.
Make a comment on it, that the, I, my impression of what the action tracker was about was moving all of the projects forward, as far as, you know, and the little things that need to get done to make sure that they're all getting done, and things don't sit for two years. You know, or whatever, pick, pick a period of time. So it's more than just a to-do list. It's, this is what we have going on, and everything that needs to be done to get that item done.
And my, my idea is, you know, like, like tonight, I have one, two, three, four action items from tonight's meeting. You know, like, we said, we gotta, like, change the form, because the police chief doesn't sign it anyway. We're gonna have a review of School Street after a while. And, you know, so that's after two years, that's a date. So you need a date when this is expected. We need an owner, and another action item, Jeff, we need to bring the personnel policy up to date. So those are things hanging that we said we do, and we gotta put them on the list to do. And on the other hand, you don't want too many low-hanging fruit, because you never get to the deep stuff to solve it.
Thank you. All right. The next item J is the discussion on contracts for various unions and, and groups, and this is, but, Mr. May?
Yeah, I brought this forward just because I was looking at the status of the contracts and noticed that we have multiple ending or expiring this month. And you know, we have a town council, dispatch union, local thirty-nine highway, sewer, buildings and grounds, police union, interim town administrator, are all kind of up in the air, as far as I can see from, you know, they're, they're undetermined at this moment. And we are looking for the end of the month as the close on them. And I just was looking for a status on them. That was basically it.
I can update you on those. On the auditor, they are, it's the last year of their contract, but they are gonna complete the FY twenty-five audits. It'll be due out in the fall. I did speak to Jeff about getting that out for some quotes. Probably by fall, so we can get someone set up for the next year. Town council is gonna be on the appointments for next meeting. I have to look at the agreement and see, I, I believe he's been doing it annually. I have to find where that, where that one is. Dispatch union and police union are almost completed, I want to say. We have that on the executive session for tonight. Local thirty-nine, highway sewer, buildings and grounds union, we started negotiations, and don't believe we'll get them done by June thirtieth, but we might be close. And the last one, the interim town administrator one, is in the board's hands.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well said, Ms. May.
Yeah, that gives me an idea of where we are. Well, I appreciate that.
Ms. Thoth?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have one question. I noticed Holly said we do have the appointment for town council next. When, how long ago did we hire town council, and how often should we review that?
I can't give you the year, but I believe Carter was here when Tommy Harrington was hired town council.
I think it's twenty eighteen.
So it's been it's been a number of years.
It's been a number of years. And I, I'll have to look and see, they have an agreement that Adam had done with them. I don't know if it's annually or every few years. I'll have to look, look up what their agreement is. I can't seem to find it in our files, our online files.
Yeah, cause there's no contract listed for him.
It's been
I think a general practice is, I think it depends on what type of service you're talking about with town council. Probably every three to five years, we should go out for bids. I could add that to my list with the auditor one.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
If memory serves me correctly, yeah, that twenty eighteen date is, is striking a bit of a resonance here. I believe that was also due in part, Mr. Goldstein, who was the town council for a number of years, was in his transition leaving the private practice as the attorney and stepping over to become a magistrate, and is now a full-up judge over at the Gardner District Court. So there was a whole big wave and shift of everything going on. We weren't left in the lurch, but I remember there was a bit of a scramble to get a town council in line. I, I have to do a little bit more digging on that. Little bit fuzzy, but I'm trying to bring it back into clear view.
Thank you. We all set on it?
I'm, I'm good.
Last item K, discussion on updating email addresses for all town employees. Mr. May?
Yes, this has been a ongoing little pet peeve of mine for multiple years. Because I firmly believe that town, the town's email address should denote the position and not the person. It definitely makes continuity from one employee to another much easier, much more fluent. And it stops us from missing emails and requests. Because, I mean, I don't know, but when, you know, Carter changed, we changed from Carter to, to Adam. You know, was somebody, you know, how long was somebody monitoring Carter's emails? And, you know, when, now that we've changed from Adam to Holly, how long are we gonna change? Because, you know, three months, six months, a year, two years. You don't know how long these people are gonna come back, you know, to town, and, you know, just go back in their email, and okay, this is the person, and boom, 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 and, and then it just, it's gone. It's, and we look like we're just non-responsive. And I think by putting it to the job, then no matter who's in that position, the emails go to that position. And there's no issue when employees change. You know, the only thing you gotta change at that point is the password. You know, we don't have all these individual, personal emails going out that I really see no purpose in. You know, I, I, I really don't. Not as a corporate entity. I, I just don't see the reason to have personal, personally denoted emails. And I would suggest that that be something that we look to change in, in the near future.
And that's basically why I brought her on there?
What discussion?
I use it both, I've used it both ways. I have a rec at templetonma.gov, a concession stand at templetonma.gov. And it works really well, because you're, like you said, you're moving people out, and it keeps everything together. So for that, theirs, they do, they have rec sport at templetonma.gov, and they have a couple of different entities. They flip them out seasonal. So some of them come in, and then a passcode will come out, and then they go in it. So that the public always knows to use that email to address. And usually during the time, the other person that's in it, if it's not them, they'll just leave it aside for that person coming in. So it works really well there. But then you have, like, like, the select board used to have one, and you can't have that because it puts us in conflict of, you know, violations of the law. So we can't like all be together and, you know, like, we could talk together in an email, cause that would be like a quorum, so. You can't really do those kind of emails, so. In that sense, so some, some things work, I agree, like, having one, like, you see it in other towns, like, I think, I think the mayor at Gardner, I think it's mayor at Gardner at something, I, some of them just have a general one in some of the towns that I have dealt with, and I've had an email, they don't have a special so that you can go to that department. And then some do, depending on, like, like, the select board or something, something special where they can't be together. They have to get them separately. So I've seen it done all kinds of different ways. But I think that the top, top level of jobs, I mean, that's what I found. I just found that everyone for the concession stand and having, and I think that having one for like the town administrator or, you know, like a prominent thing that can just go to makes sense. And then also the single ones makes sense too. So it depends on the situation, I suppose.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I just wanted to comment on this. When we had gone to Microsoft Office and got the new website back in twenty fourteen, I believe it was, it was a big project that we were getting an outside tech company. And at that time, they recommended that we do the first initial last name. It's more of a standard. I know there's a lot of towns that do it by the job. I think we were doing it back then by the job. And I think either way can work just as well, but the way we have it set up, when someone leaves their position, I'll contact Entree and let them know so-and-so is leaving this position. We have a new one being hired. We put an away message for a certain amount of time, and then we can merge the mailboxes, so all the, all the emails are kept archived and available if we need them for public records. And having a tech company allows us to have that stability and continuity from email to email, so. I think it works the way it is, but.
Is like, like Adam's being forwarded into your account, like
I actually have his whole inbox in my account. When he left, he had told me he has a lot of documents in there, so I have, yeah, I have access to that, and so anything coming into him would come into me, yeah.
For, for how long?
Until I, until we change it. So I'd probably keep it for a good year. Like, can get all of his documents and save them.
Yes.
A couple of comments, things for you to think about. The, you can have a combination of two. You can have a distribution list that would list all, for example, you know, the select board at templetonma.gov, right? Where what is, what is outwardly facing is a single email address that then populates and propagates out to the five-member board. So you get the best of both worlds. It goes to one, it goes out individually. You should, in, from a, just a best practices point of view, you, you, each, each person should have an individual email address associated with them. As I said in my public comments, I truly believe that all of the, the volunteer positions are technically municipal employees. That there's, it's, it's not different in that aspect when it comes to communications. The, the other thing that you need to consider is The other thing that you need to consider is, from a security perspective, when somebody leaves a company, their account should be locked down and anybody who needs to have access to it, you almost, you have to, like, back it up, archive it, and then somebody gets a separate thing. Because what happens if the person who then has access to that account gets rid of things, does something, right? Not, I don't mean being, you know, mean or bad or anything else, you know, purposely doing something wrong, but just something, they do something, then the person's email that that was could actually be held liable. And you shouldn't be mixing and matching. Two people should not have access to the same account. That's just, it's not, from a security perspective, that's just not best practice.
Mr. Chair? I believe what Liz was talking about was what we had actually set up for the advisory committee back a few years ago, that you had advisory committee at templetonmass.gov and that would feed each individual member of the advisory committee so that everybody got the same information. And that, I think, is pretty important. But, you know, anything can be made to work. I just think certain things work better and smoother and with less potential chaos for the consumer of the services. Because that's who we have to think about, the people that are trying to get a hold of us, people that are trying to get a hold of people in the town office. How easy is it for them and how is the continuity from, you know, a change of employee to another employee and so on down the road? And we might have come up with a method that functions, but is it the simplest, easiest way to have it work without, let's say, outside manipulation by other characters? I don't necessarily think so, but that's just me. And we have five members on the board. But I just thought it was something that we should discuss and it has merit. And with that, I'll be quiet again.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, my two cents on it. All of our emails, I know I have on the bottom of mine, there's the tagline that the Attorney General is determined, these are private or public communications susceptible to, and it cites out the law. And we've heard it now a couple of times. Yes, when you, an employee leaves, it is generally the best practice to lock the account down. If somebody needs to get access, there is a very specific, very restricted route to do that. Just a point of order, if I may, through you to the ITA. Holly, you said we're on a Microsoft system, but I understood we're on Microsoft 365, what some products would call a light version. Which do we actually have?
That's a good question. I think it is Microsoft 365.
Okay. That, that would be what, what some developers and applicants would call the light version. It does not give the full functionality. I know there becomes a price break going Office 365 to a full-up Microsoft system. I know the standalone Microsoft systems with a designated server do have an expense to those as well. But this, this is a whole bunch of different pieces and parts and factors that we really do need to consider. Well, Mr. Chair, if I may, I'll be Lieutenant Columbo. Oh, and one more thing. We heard it during the citizen input and I know it's something that even my current job, that what we do is, nobody brings in a personally-owned device. Everything is done on a company-owned piece of equipment for the sole purpose, if for some reason that has to be secured, sequestered, somebody wants to file the search orders, et cetera. There's no loss to the individual or no loss in use and enjoyment of their private equipment. It becomes, again, a security standpoint, it's a best business practice and a business model. So I would have to say that I would agree with the original request and the discussion, you know, that our, even our volunteers and however we want to classify them, and that is something we can do as a board. You know, are they special employees? Are they in a unique circumstance? But to protect them and to protect the town itself, it would truly be beneficial that everybody serving in any function or position does have a dedicated email at their immediate disposal. That way, if anything were to go awry or if anything had to be secured, it could be done.
Mr. Chair, one last thing, just real quick. As to what was stated by Liz earlier, I believe the board not too long ago made the advisory committee special municipal employees by a vote of the board. So that takes away any question whether they are, you know, town employees. So just wanted to throw that out there, that they are special town employees because we, the board voted them so.
Do we, do we pay for each individual? Like, like, how does that work? Like, how many do we get? Like?
It's individual, it's paid by the individual. I mean, individually paid for each email address.
Each email address?
Yeah, so that would, that would really be a big budget hike.
Yeah. Do you know what it is per email, like a roundabout?
It's either ten or twelve dollars a month for the cheapest one, which is the online only where you don't download the software. The E3 one comes with the software and that's more expensive. But if you're talking about every individual employee, you know, committee member, I mean, you've seen the list that we're going to bring to the next meeting of how many there are.
One last thing.
If that's a negotiation point for, for, you know, the, the price breaks, you can do one by one. Yes, it's, you still pay for, by, by the number of emails. You control the number of emails and, and that somebody leaves, you lock them down, you close that account and it comes off of your, your, your charge, right? But if you say, you can negotiate, you know, for up to ten, you get this, right? Up to, you know, a hundred, you get this, right? So there is, there's room for improvement.
Okay.
All right. That's the last item. On the regular agenda, we have no old business. We do have two, we have an executive session under two sections of the law. So we will actually be in executive session to do one thing and then we would move to another thing. Before we do member comments, and it's ten minutes to nine, the board policy is if we move work past ten, we vote to do that. And just to be safe, I would entertain a motion for the board to work past ten p.m.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. On the motion. How do you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
I go yes. At eight. Thank you for that. Before we can do, deal with the executive session, order of the comments. Mr. May, you have any?
I'm good.
Ms. Graves?
Yeah, I would just like to wish the Narragansett teacher, Mrs. Sherwood, who will be retiring this year, we wish her best wishes. She was a wonderful teacher. My children had her and she taught right here in this building. That's where they had her. So when it was the school. So we wish Mrs. Sherwood from Narragansett the best wishes. I'd like to also wish good wishes to our, our town's Bay Booth Girl Softball League. They are in, they are coming into playoff season, so we wish them luck in the playoffs.
Very good. Ms. Bassel? Mr. Toth?
Yep, a couple of quick things, and this, no particular order, as we're approaching the end of our fiscal year, late bills always crops up on my mind. In my personal belief and mind, the managers need to be paying attention to everything that's out there. You know what expenses you've had, you know what you've committed to. If the vendors aren't getting back to you, I believe the manager should be reaching out to them with the understanding that we need to get these in or you're not going to get paid. Just one way to look at it. In my research this past couple of weeks, looking on some other things, looking at some comparison communities and a few other things across the Commonwealth, one thing that I noticed that has a striking similarity, and it didn't matter, city, small community, big community, somebody like us, too big to be small, too small to be big, when you start drilling into their web pages, when you get to the boards, committees, commissions, et cetera, they all had spelled out, like in our case, the select board, five members, who served in a two-year term, who served in the second block of two-year terms, who had the standalone one-year term. The name applied with the end date of the term. So it was very clearly seen. We still have some positions that have never been filled. And I would like to see that come forward. I know I've put that forward a couple of different times with some draft Excel spreadsheets and it just seems to have fallen by the wayside. Candy, there you go, another action tracker item. Real quickly, the Bolleville Elementary School Project groundbreaking was yesterday. The weather wasn't quite as cooperative, but it did get better as the day went on. It was nice to put a bunch of faces to all these names and all the communications we saw coming back and forth. I thought it was pretty well attended. I thought there were some great comments from all the participants there and it was enjoyable to be there. The last comment I have regards to meeting tonight. The Zoom link was actually broken. When I went into the email and clicked into it, I couldn't connect to it via computer or via my cellphone. That's a problem. Fortunately, I have Zoom installed as an app on my phone. I was able to open the app and then add in the meeting and the passcode to actually get to this juncture. But we need to look at that a little tighter. I don't know how or why it didn't work, but it didn't work. That's a fail point. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I have, regarding the, the lightning strike, TCTV was in the building at the time, actually having a meeting. And they heard the boom and the crash, but they didn't realize their building got hit. A resident went in and told them. And then pretty quickly, I got a phone call from the interim town administrator and Mr. Sozik, he came back. He was out in Vermont. The fire department came, the ambulance were there, the police were there. It's, and it got taken care of. And the following day, I mean, that day it got boarded up. And then Monday, the, Mr. Sozik had guys working down there, the electricians checking out stuff, some scrap wood and stuff that got ripped off was, was picked up. So the whole evolution went, it went pretty good. And just glad nobody got hurt that was in the building. The second thing is, is more of a, it's a business item, but this is a business. And our bylaws, chapter fifty-one, fifty-nine, excuse me, specifically fifty-nine dash one, the select board. The board shall have the general direction and management of the property and affairs of the town in all matters, not otherwise provided for by laws or these bylaws. The town building is town property. The keys to the building are town property. We have two members that I understand do not have keys. We're not going to have any riff. This just ends tonight. It's a simple fix. We're not going to have any arguments. We're not going to have any hostility, this, that, or anything. I went and spoke with the Building and Grounds Director, Mr. Sozik. I asked him if he could get a couple sets of keys made. I explained to him the reasoning. He got them. I signed for them. I'm going to give them to the two members that don't have keys. I will get blank forms, receipt forms from Mr. Sozik. At the next meeting, the board members can sign for them and relieve me of the responsibility of the keys. You're going to do your duty. You're going to pick up your package. You're going to sign the warrants when your schedule allows. I come in the building sometime at three, four in the morning, sometime later at night. That's just me. I don't know how everybody else works, what your schedules are, but we have responsibilities and duties by state law. We were elected. The government outline in the select board is the voters, the selectmen. And then it goes down from there. So, Ms. Bassel, there were your keys. Mr. May, there were your keys.
Thank you much.
That's the end of story. This is just business. That's it. Simple as that. Now, we have, as I stated, we have an executive session. We go into, under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A dash three, Strategy for Collective Bargaining with the Police Union, one fifty-five, Dispatch Local, one fifty-five, A, AFL-CIO, where an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and the chair so declares, I do. We will also be conducting a second topic within, under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A dash two, discussing negotiations with non-union personnel, the interim town administrator. So I move to enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A dash three, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the police, Local, one fifty-five, Union Dispatch, Local, one fifty-five, A, AFL-CIO, and under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A dash two, conduct strategy session for negotiations with non-union personnel, the interim town administrator.
Good.
Motion made, seconded by Mr. May. We will need a breakout window. And we will, after the vote, we will break, give you time to set up and do whatever you have to do. So on the motion and seconded, how do you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Mr. Chair, before I cast my vote, I would ask you make a friendly amendment to your motion that we will only come out of the executive session to close the open business meeting.
It is amended. Thank you for the reminder.
Seconded.
Mr. May, do you mind?
I vote yes.
And I vote yes. We'll take a little recess, give you time to set up and, well, they left.